Hi, everyone. Welcome. I'm just giving folks a minute to get in. Okay, welcome and thank you for being with us tonight. Monday, September 19th for the Berkeley School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Adina Ishi of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emoryville. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in our government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not support or endorse candidates. The co-sponsor for this forum is the Berkeley PTA Council. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under ground rules set for this forum. You can see the rules on our website on the candidate forum page. One of our volunteers has just put the link in the chat. Berkeley Community Media is live streaming tonight's forum on Comcast Channel 33 and AT&amp;T Channel 99. We are recording this forum and the video will be available on our website, l w v b a e dot org, on our YouTube channel and through votersedge.org/ca with links on our social media accounts at l w v b a e. There are six candidates running for Berkeley School Board Director. They are Khadija A. Brown, Mike Chang, Tatiana Guerrero Ramos, Norma J. F. Harrison, Rachy Lee, and Jennifer Shinoski. You can vote for three candidates. School Board Directors are decided through a plurality vote. With a plurality vote, the candidates who receive the highest number of votes will be declared the winners. Now, let's go over a few rules for this forum. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by drawing lots. The timekeeper will signal candidates for the green colored window, which will count down the seconds from two minutes to 15 seconds to go, when it will turn yellow, and then red when the full two minutes is up. Attendees had an opportunity to submit written questions through our website or when they registered for the forum via Zoom. If you have additional questions, you may submit them by clicking the Q&amp;A icon and typing your questions. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them to me. All questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. The order of answering questions will be alternated and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the responses given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one minute for opposing statement. Now, let's begin with our first candidate, Jennifer. Jennifer, you may start as soon as the timer pops up.
Adina.
Go ahead and timer.
Great, thank you so much. I'd like to thank you, Adina, for introducing tonight's forum and to the League of Women Voters for all the work that you do in our community, like educational events like tonight. My name is Jennifer Shinoski. I am a single mom of two Berkeley Unified Kids. I have a fifth grader at Malcolm X and I have an eighth grader at King Middle School. I am also a chemistry instructor at Merritt College. That's one of the four Peralta Community Colleges, where, among other things, I have done work in the community, founding a chemistry club for students to do outreach in our middle schools with sciences and open unified. And I have served for 12 years as the principal investigator for a Bridges Tobacco Laureate Grant aimed at diversifying the sciences. Since 2017, I've proudly served as president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, where I've championed investments in our classrooms and for our students and fought for rights like pay parity for our part-time workforce. Public education has been really central in my life. I have committed my life's work to public education and I have committed my volunteer hours to public education. In 2020, I co-chaired the initiatives Measures E, G, and H, which were aimed at increasing the amount of funding to our schools. During COVID, I volunteered to coordinate the grocery delivery system through the Berkeley Public Schools Fund, as well as helping out at the Ed Hub, providing technology to our students and more. My priorities include addressing our opportunity gaps with an emphasis on STEAM education, teacher retention and recruitment, and authentic engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next will be Khadija.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting me to participate in this process. It is an honor to be here with the League of Women Voters and so many other organizations that support and surround our schools and our district and our students with a lot of love and a lot of support. So it is very meaningful to be here this evening. My name is Khadija Brown and I am proud, super proud, to serve as the youngest school board president and the first teacher ever elected to the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Together with my board colleagues and our district and city partners, we weathered the challenges of the pandemic by closing the digital divide and implementing new systems and services that helped to bring Berkeley Unified School District into the 21st century. I'm proud of the work that we have done and continue to do on the Board of Education. We approved a boundary policy to combat sexual harm and sexual harassment and expanded funding for our peer-to-peer education and Title IX office. We passed our first climate literacy resolution that ensures that all of our students graduate from BUSD climate literate. We approved the framework for African-American Success Initiative and priorities within our Black Lives Matter, AAPI, and Latinx Resolutions, which all seek to uplift, affirm, and support our most vulnerable learners. As a teacher and proud product of this very school district, I am committed to the academic and holistic success of all of our children because my firm belief is that all children can succeed as long as they are provided a quality education that is both equitable and accessible. I am running for reelection because I want to continue to be a champion for closing the equity and opportunity gaps, a champion for ensuring that all of our students have access to a safe learning environment. I want to continue to be a champion for developing educational.
Thank you for your time as well. Okay, sorry. Next up is Rachy Lee.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rachy Lee and I'm running for Berkeley School Board. Thank you for everybody for taking the time to be here with us tonight. It's an honor to speak with you. I'm a mom to a sixth grader and a fourth grader and I am running because education is the best tool for social justice we have. The pandemic erased a lot of time in a young person's life. So more than ever, we need to step up our game. And children and families deserve elected leaders who will be their champion. If you elect me, I will act with the urgency that our children deserve. I have dedicated my life to serving other people's children. I'm an attorney by training. I was a foster youth attorney representing kids from one day old to 21 years old in Alameda County. I represented girls who were sexually assaulted. I represented six-year-olds recruited by gangs. I represented teens who tried to take their own life, you know? And I've seen a lot and I've also seen incredible resilience. I stood with them. I fought for them. I was also the director of Academic Achievement at one of the country's most racially and socio-economically diverse law schools in the country. I helped students there who had the highest need succeed. And yes, it's possible. Many of them are successful working professionals today. And I designed one of the country's first hybrid online legal career tracks in social justice and science and technology. In my free time, I led the effort to create a Mandarin immersion district school in a neighboring town, which now proudly serves 90% minority children with one out of every two seats reserved for low-income families. I am uniquely qualified for this job and yes, it is a job. We need our elected leaders to deliver results and that's what I intend to do.
Thank you. Tatiana?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I super appreciate it. I'm running for school board for several different reasons. One of the first things that I would do, however, is work with the city and the district to make sure that 16-year-olds can vote for school board representatives because we voted that policy in, but somehow the district and the city have not implemented it, which means that 16-year-olds, all of Berkeley voted for that policy, but it's not happening and it's not fair to the students who worked really, really hard to get that voted into law. The other thing we need to do is we need to stop letting kiddos fall through the cracks. Black and brown kids' bodies are being used at Berkeley High to raise money for the athletic department and those same black and brown bodies are not educated and being prepared for further education and vocational and independent living after school. It's shameful what's going on. We're sending Berkeley High ninth graders to school reading at a fourth grade level. It's totally unacceptable. The literacy issue in this district is absurd. There have been lawsuits and there is still no universal screening tool in place. It's confusing about why that's happening. We're sending kids, we're graduating kids unprepared for college, as noted in a recent macro study done by a former Berkeley High math teacher. We're a really rich community in spirit, in finances, in resources. And what we need to do is come together collectively and start acting with some urgency around all of these issues that we're facing. The students are depending on us and so are families.
Thank you. Norma? Norma, you are on mute.
Thanks. I want us to get to the idea to aim to stop segregating children. Childhood is not an illness that needs to be cured through attendance at the various anti-human institutions, the compulsory education institutions that have been set up to enable us to go to make profit for our owners. You know that school is compulsory. If the child in your charge doesn't go to school, somebody can get fined, arrested. Eventually, the child that's not going to school, if they don't start to attend after this harassment, can be picked up and placed in a so-called educational construct, which does, what makes, I posted this on the chat and I've sent it to people and I'll, as much as possible, say it for us. What makes you think you can repair a compulsorily age-segregated social structure designed to marshal people through the daily indoctrination into into fitting into the for-profit brutality that is the US-American social system that has made the system pretty much appear God-given, natural to human beings, to which racism is required, which is a babysitting service so parents, friends, family can go to their effective cubicle to make profit for our owners. And you can look at John Pilger's P.I.L.G.E.R. article, "Silencing the Lambs: How Propaganda Works."
Norma, your time is up. Thank you. Mike?
Hello, my name is Mike Chang. I'm a parent of three BUSD kids, two of whom are still at VHS. One of them graduated recently. That's 12 years in BUSD and a few more years to go. In addition, I'm an education attorney at the US Department of Education, Office of Rights, where I enforce federal laws that prohibit discrimination on the basis of race, sex, disability, and age and I ensure that students have fair access to programs and services in schools. Been there for 15 years. I'm also a teacher. I received my PhD in ethnic studies here at Cal before I went on to law school, where I got a Critical Race Studies degree in law. I continue to teach at Cal, luckily, in ethnic studies and I also teach at UC Hastings College of Law and Education Law. I'm also a labor partner at the US Department of Education. I'm the co-chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Council. Over 4,400 employees, where I've been implementing President Biden's executive order on diversity and inclusion across the federal government and federal services. In that position, I'm an American Federation of Government Employees Representative. I'm endorsed by Senator Nancy Kerrigan, Skinner, sorry, Mayor Jesse Aragon, Vice Mayor Kate Harrison, council members Rachel Robinson, Sophie Hahn, a supermajority of the school board. I'm running under the priorities of equitable access for all students, closing the opportunity gap and creating a positive school climate for all students, bringing my 15 years of experience to the school board from the US Department of Education to ensure that all students have fair access to education. In particular, I want to put in place programming for wellness centers across the schools, as I've done in other school districts in cases I've addressed at the US Department of Education, to ensure that all students are able to have a place to de-escalate and hear from a counselor when necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. Since we're switching orders, we'll start with Khadija. And the first question is, how has your experience been running for school board? What inspired you to run?
I really appreciate that question. My experience running for school board has been phenomenal so far because not only am I getting to talk about my campaign and my priorities, but it's given me an opportunity to talk, as the current president of the board, to talk about what is currently happening in our school district, to share and celebrate our successes, but to also bring our community in to help surround us with our challenges as well. So it's been really great. And what has inspired me to run is that these past four years serving on the board has been phenomenal. We've done so much work and I'm really proud of all of the things that we've been able to implement and I need to see those things. We've been planting seeds and I need to see those things grow and blossom. And so I am running again for reelection because I'm committed to the work that we are doing. I'm committed to the city, committed to our young people. And so that is why I'm running. That's why I'm inspired to continue to do the work and hope that you all will support me on November 8th so that I can continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rachy.
The honest answer is, running for office has been really hard. It's been one of the hardest things I've ever done. And my logo is Defy Limits and I always tell myself, see, you're defining your own limit. And boy, is it true. But it's also such a privilege to be able to do so because I believe that candidates and elected officials need to speak for everyday people and everyday working families and bring change. Talk about change that other people do not have the platform to do. Now, with that said, I am running because we have a lot of work to do in this district. It is not acceptable to me that we have one of the worst academic outcomes for our students, but we are one of the top spenders in Alameda County. We need to have elected leaders who are accountable to results and deliver to us results. That's why I'm running.
Thank you. Tatiana?
Yeah, I agree with Rachy. It's been super hard. It's also been really awesome because I've had 12 years of working with the students and families in this district and 12 years of hearing them talk about their challenges at every level from K through 12. And so I'm running because I have three kids in the district. Well, one who graduated in 2021, but all three of my kids have been academically wounded. They're all neurodivergent. We all have ADHD. I am the lived experience of many of our district families and those families need to be represented on the school board because as a single mom, especially of three children, it's been really hard to make sure that my students' needs, my own kids' needs are being met. And often, my children are like, can you please advocate for us now? Sorry, it's just the life of a single mom is having everything in sight.
Thank you. Norma? Norma, you're on.
Yes, I got it. I am not telling you that we need to fix school. As you likely know, it's already fixed. It does the job of marshaling people into position to serve the profit system, this brutal oppressive mind-controlling system. I have a bumper sticker that says, "Capitalism is not a victimless crime." The tautology is... Sir, the prophecy, yeah, okay. The tautology is, we are free and we all know that's not true. But we work around that in our minds to accept the control our owners' social and actual physical structures have on us. Sorry, running through on the computer. It's jumped around all the way up.
Your time is actually up.
Good.
Okay. Mike is next?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm running to bring my 15 years of track record working with school districts across the state of California, across the country, to ensure that public schools are fair and equitable to all students. In particular, coming out of the pandemic, there are a number of issues associated with learning loss and in particular, socio-emotional issues with anxiety and depression of students that are clearly impacting and having an impact on their access to education. I'd like to help the district with the new incoming superintendent and work with the rest of the school board members, if elected, to put in place pragmatic remedies and resolutions to ensure that each student gets an individualized education that is in compliance with the law, but also that allows them to reach their best potential. There are many ways that I've done this and the federal government does this on a daily basis and I'm seeking to bring my pro bono legal counsel to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you. I agree that it's exhausting, what Rachy and Tatiana expressed before. You know, as a single mom who has a full-time job, it's more than I imagined. It's also really wonderful and it's wonderful because I've learned so much more about our district, about our community, about parents, about the kids in our district. And I have talked to so many wonderful people who are really committed to public education as a whole and to Berkeley School specifically. What inspired me, you know, I was asked to run by parents, community members, teachers, and my approach in my entire life is that when there is something put in front of me that I think I can be of service to and I can do good for, I'm going to jump right in. And so I'm jumping in.
Thank you. For the next question, we will start with Rachy. Years of sexual harm by a Berkeley teacher represent a profound breakdown in student safety and well-being. Could the board have acted differently and how so?
Boy, is that an understatement. Yes, absolutely. It is, we cannot have a sexual perpetrator in our district for decades and was just let go last year. So I think this is a no-brainer that no doubt it is shameful and we absolutely have to do better. I'm mortified that I am in a district where that has happened. And so when young people needed us, we failed and we failed miserably. The good news is that due to parent advocacy around this issue, we now have some structures in place for reporting and investigation and follow-through. But that just really, you know, pretty much recently, you know, got to a point where it looks like it might go well. So we need to have metrics. We need to keep our eye on it and we need to have progress reports on how it's going and we need to hear from our students.
Thank you. Tatiana?
The board should have fired Matt Bissel immediately. That's the bottom line because it would have cost them less than the lawsuits that are now going through the district. It's absolute, I had to pull students from his class. So the fact that the administration at Berkeley High knew about this, had documented it and did nothing about it and that the Berkeley Federation of Teachers was complicit in that in helping to protect him is shameful. And that's something that I plan on working on when I'm elected. It's unbelievable to me that we, that this district would have let a sexual predator do as much damage as he did. And I plan on making that one of my biggest issues.
Thank you. Norma?
We've been told we and our children can't be around each other through the day, that they have to be taken away from us and sent to these compulsory so-called education, free education structures. Instead, what we need is that people in our community could enjoy our children with us. People can learn by being with people and doing the things in our community that need to be done, that fit people's desires to be part of the community, change the meaning of work, end the eight-hour day forever. Only let us have work that must be done because it needs to be done and people want it done. They communicate over it and make decisions to decide to...
Norma, your time is up. I'm going to repeat the question after three people go, just moving forward, just to let you all know. So the question again, it will be Mike's turn to speak. Years of sexual harm by a Berkeley teacher represent a profound breakdown in student safety and well-being. Could the board have acted differently and how so?
Thanks so much. This is an area of the law that I implement on a daily basis is Title IX sex harassment. From a federal compliance perspective, there are a number of remedies that are required to be put in place to ensure prompt and effective responses of notice of sexual harassment or sexual violence, such as the case that folks are talking about now. That requires full staffing and programmatic support. Policies and procedures need to be in place and you need the appropriate staffing. There has been a lot of cycling in and out of the coordinators of the compliance office at BUSD who address Title IX or sex-based discrimination or violence. And I'd like to see the office stabilize. A person that is there is doing a great job and I like to see her fully supported to ensure that these type of things don't happen again. In terms of the board, there are disciplinary measures under the California Ed Code that they implement, but you need to have the proper systems in place, you know, when to do so. So that's something I want to work with when I get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you and thank you for repeating the question. I think obviously there were failings of everyone involved in this situation. I agree that it shouldn't have been allowed to happen and go on for so long. You know, I think some things that the board could have done are more investment in the Title IX office and making sure that that office is fully supported. So we now have, you know, a Title IX office with a wonderful teacher who really does a lot of outreach with students and really holds them well. We have to make sure that that person is fully supported and stays in the office. We also need to understand as board members what the rules are associated with Ed Code so that we can push back when we get complaints and hear complaints and ensure that we are following the law to hold everyone accountable.
Thank you. Khadija?
Yes, thank you so much for the question. First, I want to acknowledge and...
Um, first I want to acknowledge and and uh bring to everyone's attention uh that the board continues to uh act within our duties as a board, um, understanding what certain policies, uh procedures, systems and, you know, protocols there that are there. Um, so I do want to identify that first. I think what what the board could do uh better and what we should do better is move to a place where we are a bit more proactive instead of being responsive. Um, I think that the board uh has done uh work to try to be responsive to what has happened in our school district uh around sexual harm and sexual harassment. Um, so the couple of things that we've done, like I talked about earlier is our our policy, boundary policy to combat sexual harm, increase funding for peer to peer education as well as increase funding for our Title IX office as well as I under my role as president created uh a gender and equity and sexual harassment advisory committee which will launch this year. However, we need to not just be responsive. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, so for our next question, question number three, within the school district, which voices are the strongest in your opinion and which are inadequately heard? And this question will start with Tatiana.
Thanks.
You know, I don't know what you just said. I I've tell, uh, the sound for me is.
Norma, let me repeat the question and then we will allow Tatiana uh her time. So within the school district, which voices are the strongest in your opinion? Which are inadequately heard?
Thanks. Thanks. I just want to say really quickly that I'm hearing a lot about laws being followed, but the teacher who was the sexual predator wasn't following the law for twenty years. So we need to be mindful of that. Um, the voices that are the most heard are um the resourced families and um a lot of administrators and the voices that are the least heard are the students. Um, and my goal will be to change that completely. Students need to be more heard, families need to be more heard, especially our more marginalized families who um I've been in IEP meetings where black and brown families don't even know why their kids qualified for an IEP and that's shameful. And that's on the the district and the people who are assessing the children. Um, we need to hear more from parents. We need to be able to incorporate feedback from parents and students into teacher evaluations.
Thank you, Norma.
Right, um, sex perversion arises out of the perverse society that we live in. To, it's a derivative of abuse that is long well suppressed. Uh, what the public schools practice with remorseless proficiency, however, is the prevention of citizenship and the stifling of self government. When fifty-eight percent of the thirteen year olds tested by this organization, a national uh set assessment for educational progress think it is against the law to start a third party in America. We are dealing not with a sad education failure but with a remarkably subtle success by our owners. Consider how effectively America's future citizens are trained not to judge for themselves about anything from the first grade to the twelfth, from one coast to the.
Norma. So our time is up.
Thanks.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, this is an interesting question. It's an important question. Um, there are inequities across uh Berkeley Unified, of course, and uh these are embedded in our society. Um, and there, they are problems, however, that we can remedy in in a pragmatic manner. Uh, but they require time, they require prioritization, um, they require full staffing. Uh, for example, um, English language learners, um, their needs will need to be addressed in terms of addressing uh the number of interpreters and translators we have, um, the uh, the English master plan, language and master plan. In addition, um, African American student achievement uh opportunity. Those are also an area of um initiative that we will need to continue to work upon. But there are also areas that the current school board have begun to put in place. Um, I think from in terms of my practice experience in this area, um, putting in place appropriate policies and procedures and ensuring the full staffing from a school board perspective to support the teachers to do their jobs will go a very long way. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Jennifer. I'm gonna repeat the question again. Uh, within the school district, which voices are the strongest in your opinion? Which are inadequately heard?
Yeah, so I think the strongest voices um are the voices, as Tatiana said, of the really well resourced parents. And also the administration and the board because those are really the decision makers. And so their voices are heard through the actions that they take throughout our schools. I think that those that are inadequately heard are, you know, our parents and the kids that are served in the schools. And specifically the parents of, you know, um, particular communities, right? So the less resourced among us um has less time, less money, right? And less ability to advocate and and raise up our voices. So I think it's really important that we invest in hearing those voices through practical strategies like funding affinity groups and ensuring that we seek out those voices in the decision making processes and center them.
Thank you. Kadisha?
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, it is unfortunate that our schools reflect what is happening in our society where the loudest voices are the voices that are most heard um are represented by a specific group of people and those who are oftentimes voiceless or whose voices aren't brought into the conversation are represented by another. And oftentimes those are divided among racial lines and that includes our students, our faculty, our staff as well as our families in BU SD. Um, I wish the question was whose voices should be the loudest or the ones that should be most amplified? And that should be our students' voices. Our students are amazing and know exactly what it is that they want when it comes to their academic and educational goals as well as their social emotional goals as as well. And so it must be our job to center our students. That is our entire work. That's what we are here to do. And it should must be our, the role of our school districts to be responsive to the needs of our students and then our families and staff as well.
Thank you, Rachie.
There are voices on the outside and there are voices on the inside. And uh, this is what I discovered uh very intimately as I've been campaigning. Um, so the strongest voice, and I'm not saying good or bad, okay? You asked whether the, who is the strongest voice? The strongest voice is the union. There's no doubt about it. They have direct access, access to the district. They have direct access to some board members and they have direct access and sit on decision making committees um that happen year round. Um, going back to the Matt Bissell, they have, of course, you know, collective bargaining with their, with their contracts. And so I want to go back and actually look at the contract that governed him to see what the termination terms were. The least, smallest voice are children and families, especially those with less resources, including time to be able to constantly stay on top of it and constantly advocate for their kids.
Thank you. Uh, for our next question, Norma is gonna start us off. Um, the question is, what work have you done in the past? Let me say it louder. What work have you done in the past that you think will help you as a board member to make lasting improvements to the after school program? And we're gonna start with Norma.
Okay, well, this one, as far as I'm concerned, starts with the thought about filling in bubble tests. And they go, here's four choices. Which of those most suits the ant response you want to make? That kind of control is exactly what's going on and conditioned into our students' behavior. Answers are right and answers are wrong. But mostly answers are short at all levels, teacher made tests called almost exclusively for short answers and recall of information reports this researcher. In more than a thousand classrooms visited by his researchers, only rarely was there evidence to suggest instruction likely to go much beyond more mere possession of information to a level of understa.
Um, Mike, you're up next.
Thank you so much. Um, as a uh longtime parent in the school district, um, with a wife and I who both work full time, um, we've actively utilized the um Berkeley Unified's Learns Program, which I assume that's where the question is coming from, the uh, school district's after school program. Um, that's an important enrichment source for um students to be able to uh take really interesting classes, but also do sports um from the after regular schedule end of the day until about six o'clock PM and it supports working parents of all income groups in order for them to run a family and uh have an appropriate uh family life. Um, so uh BU SD's uh Learns Program has been absolutely critical to my family and from an equity perspective as, again, as an attorney who's put in place many um resolution agreements across the state. Um, I have a lot of experience in ensuring equitable access to these programs. That is something we we do need to ensure and that they're fully staffed and funded as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Would you repeat the question for me, Adina? I'm sorry.
Yes, no worries. Uh, the question was, what work have you done in the past that you think will help you as a board member to make lasting improvements to the after school program?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I am, uh, you know, for fifteen years I've worked as a full time faculty member at the Peralta Community Colleges. And we often, we serve, you know, um, students who, many of whom just left the K through twelve system. And we serve many of our most marginalized students. And so I can see directly from my experience as a teacher and a mentor at Merritt College that we need more services in the after school programs to bring all kids up to the skill level that they need in order to be successful beyond school. I also have strong relationships with um the University of California here in Berkeley. And I think that we could leverage a lot of partnerships with Cal to improve some of those enrichment programs and also to help fund, help get a pipeline for teachers and staff in our schools.
Sorry, Kadisha?
Yes, no problem. Um, I really appreciate uh the question because uh, and being an after school teacher is what helped me to develop my love and passion for young people as well as my love and passion for expanded learning opportunities. Um, in my current work as a teacher, I understand and know the importance of after school uh giving opportunities for students to engage with enrichment and also as while simultaneously giving opportunities for parents to receive care for their students that they need. Above all, uh, in my work as a board member, I've learned that it is important for me to engage with our community as well as develop relationships with other school districts as well as community partners and use those relationships as leverage to figure out what best practices are for our students here in BU SD as well as using my engagement with our parent leaders and parent organizations who have been begging us for a long time to improve our after school. And now it's the time to no longer belabor those conversations and put them on the back burner, but to actually do something about it. Thank you.
Uh, Rachie?
Thank you. Universal and enriching after school care is one of my top platform items. It's been there since the very beginning. It's very personal to me because lack of care disproportionately impacts women and takes us out of the workforce. Um, across school sites um in our district, families are having really dramatically different experiences. Some have it, some don't, some have this program, others don't, and it's become a bit of like a competition. Um, and that's really inequitable. And so we need to dig into the reasons why. Um, and to see if that's actually true, we need to kind of survey, right? And have a, have a good understanding of what's happening across school sites. Um, we also need to examine whether if it's a staffing issue, whether there's opportunities to partner with the city. The city actually has some amazing programs and this might be an opportunity for us to solve this staffing issue together.
Thank you. Tatiana?
So I think I'm uniquely uh positioned to deal with this because I've been um, working with students after school for a dozen years. I've partnered with the TO Learns Program to bring tutors to that program. We've partnered with um the PTAs and the Learns Programs at um Washington, at Malcolm X, at BAM, at Ruth Acti, at Rosa Parks and um Cragmont. And what we've found is that there is a um, a yearning for uh those enrichment experiences for our kiddos. I also ran um our classroom matters after school program that we opened um that served students at Thousand Oaks um and uh Cornell Elementary and Marin Elementary. Um, I ran that program. So I see, I have seen what kids need after school and at the end of the day.
Thank you. For our next question, we're gonna start with Mike. And so our fifth question. The status of the English Learning Development Program is complex and open to improvement. How have you learned about a complex issue and brought different stakeholders together to find a path forward?
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, English language development is a, also an area of um remedy and um investigation that I work in in my day job. But uh certainly also um, working with BU SD parents uh through organizations like Latinos Unidos de Berkeley. Um, I've worked with them to address the various uh type of concerns and needs that both limited English proficiency parents, it's LEP parents, those are the parents who have limited English proficiency, but also the English language learner children that they have. Um, their uh, uh, needs in terms of ensuring that an ELD um programmatic system is updated. Um, there had been an issue with uh the English Learner Master Plan um being pretty outdated and due to the efforts of uh school board directors like Anna Vassadev um and others uh and Latinos Unidos, parent involvement, putting in place um uh measures to address that. Thank you.
Jennifer?
So I think the question is asking for an example of something where I had to learn about a complex issue and try and solve, use it to solve a problem. So an example is, you know, as a single working mother um with no family in the area, when the pandemic hit and our schools closed, I knew directly how challenging it was to balance everything. Um, including facilitating my kids who were in online uh learning. So I decided to use my expertise as a chemist and try to understand about COVID testing. Um, so in fall twenty twenty, I partnered with some other parents to try and figure out if we could get a testing scheme together in order to facilitate a larger return to in person learning. Um, when it comes to um English language learners, the way that I would learn as much as possible is to center the voices of the students and parents as well as the teachers and staff that work with them. Thank you.
Um, Kadisha, I will read the question again. The question is, the status of the English Learning Development Program is complex and open to improvement. How have you learned about a complex issue and brought different stakeholders together to find a path forward?
Um, thank you for the question. Um, first I'm gonna talk about, uh, it always sounds like we're we're picking off of each other, but um, the most complex thing that I think I've dealt with on the board was navigating through the pandemic. Um, and during that time, we had to bring all of our stakeholders together to help uh bring reopen our schools. And so that included our unions and included our families and included our our uh board members and it also included our city partners. And so uh, we worked nonstop to ensure that vaccinations were available uh for all of our teachers. And we were successful in being the first school district in Alameda County to reopen. Um, and I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the gold standard approach we had to contract tracing and to um and to testing. And so I'm proud of that. In terms of our ELD, it's kind of a loaded question, but in terms of um response to our English language development, um. I'm proud to have helped and supported and helped to support our Latinx resolution, which does just that. It calls on us to update our multilingual learner master plan. And sorry, Adina, I see you talking.
Thank you. Yes, thanks. And yes, so next will be Rachey.
Every day as an attorney is dealing with complexity. And I especially saw that when I was a foster youth attorney, because every case was challenging because it dealt with a real life and usually a very severe problem. And there are times, actually, most of the times, when the, what you want for your client is what the other parties don't want for theirs. And so there are times when you can come to common ground and there are times when you cannot. And you still, as an advocate, have to have courage to do the right thing. Now, in terms of collaboration around complexity, I've done so many things related to that. I'll give you one example is leading the effort to push through a district school, a Mandarin immersion, brand new, can you imagine, brand new district school? And so it was a lot of conversation with the stakeholders, meeting people where they're at, listening to their concerns, and again, finding common ground and having very strong advocacy skills to get it done.
Thank you. Tatiana?
Thanks. Well, as a single mom of three, and all of us have ADHD, basically, my entire life is like one big complex problem to solve. So I'm sort of everyday coordinating with multiple parties, my kids' schedules, making sure they're everywhere they need to be. But beyond that, we also, Classroom Matters really had a lot to deal with when the pandemic hit. March 13th, the school was like, we're going to be closed for two weeks. And then March 16th, they were like, never mind, we're closed for foreseeable future. And we had to go from serving 250 families, actually more like 450 families, if you count our enrichment programs and our after-school programs, to serving them online and figuring out how to ensure that our students and families were getting what they needed, even though school was shut down.
Thank you. Norma?
Yeah, you're taking away from children their childness. You're, you're stigmatizing it by calling them kids. Kids, you know, are those happy-go-lucky, devil-may-care, kick-up-your-heels creatures. And that's not what children are. Children are just newer people. And I'm not saying they should rule things, but I'm not sure we should either. Let us have, let us give them back their childness, their being embraced and, and held gently. Along with that, since I haven't got the next thing in line. Oh, I know. It was, I am pushing for removal of age segregation. I insist that we need to be together to teach and learn with each other, no matter our age.
Norma, I'm sorry. From the next question, number six. Name, name examples of past experiences that would help guide the district to improve or choose a new curriculum. And we are going to start with Jennifer.
Thanks. Yeah, so this is another example of an issue that really needs broad collaboration. So, you know, choosing a new curriculum has ripple effects throughout our K-12 system. So if you're going to choose a new curriculum, say for high school math, you really need to make sure that your middle school and then elementary school aligns with the skills necessary to allow students to be successful in that high school math. So just to use that as my example, to continue, you also need to make sure that teachers have the training that they need and that teachers are part of the process of developing that new curriculum. Because if they don't buy into it, it will not be successful. Similarly, we need our staff who support instruction to also be part of that process. And then we need to engage with families to make sure that we're really clear about what the shifts are, why they're being made, and how they can be part of that process.
Thank you. Kadisha?
Yes, I want to appreciate what Jennifer just shared around, the understanding of how curriculum must be in alignment throughout the years. I think there, Adina, to the first part of your question, there have been many instances that have given us a signal that we need to reassess our curriculum. And so there, but we also have to understand that that just can't be done at the high school level where we're seeing some of our disparities in curriculum. But it's also, it has to be done aligned throughout the middle school and elementary school as well. But to back up a little bit, I think what we also should really focus on is the fact that Berkeley does not have a curriculum instruction department. We need a department for curriculum instruction. I'm so happy that we have our superintendent who has focused on organizational clarity this year. Because I know that boosting up our curriculum instruction department is what is going to make the difference for our students, not just from a curriculum standpoint, but also from an instructional practice as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachey?
The first thing you need are your elected leaders to be responsive. That's the truth, because there's not going to be any change or any examination of a possibility of change. If you don't have elected leaders who are going to seek some answers. So that's number one. You need courageous elected leaders. So let's go, let's just go into an example with literacy. We have all read national news, New York Times, et cetera, that the Lucy Cockens Teachers College have been essentially debunked by herself. And, but I, at least as a member of the public, don't have a very deep understanding of how it's being used in the classroom, if it's being used in the classroom. Maybe it's kind of teacher-dependent, you know, what do, how do the teachers feel about it? What are, what is the impact on families? So we need to make these decisions based on data. So we need to examine the impact on our student learning as a first step. And then courageously be able to pivot when needed.
Thank you. I'm going to repeat the question again. Name examples of past experiences, yeah, name examples of past experiences that would help guide the district to improve or choose a new curriculum. And next is Tatiana.
So I think that a past example is the UDL at Berkeley High, which completely redesigned the way Berkeley High students experienced their first year at Berkeley High. Hasmeen Manassian was an amazing, amazing superhero leader on that project. And I think that we should ask her about the curricula that she's finding success with at the high school level. As somebody who has developed curriculum and as someone who sees curriculum every day, I do training, I do professional development all the time. I think that it would be that what we should do is find a partners in teachers, families, students to put together some curriculum choices that make sense for the world we're in now.
Thank you. I just noticed we lost Jennifer, I think, but she's not up yet. So we'll hopefully get her back in a minute. Norma, you're next.
Yeah, segregation of knowledge by subject matter disintegrates that they might all go together with something. Somebody might be teaching ideas about what's going on in the world, and it might include math, and it might include geography, and it might include music. And the idea of segregating them for the purpose of making a person into the geography teacher or the social study, you know, it's the wrong way to look at knowledge. It goes along with this further examination. The refusal to see people and events as those in other countries see them from us is a media virus in the West. It is as if we see the world through a one-way mirror in which we are moral and benign and they are not. It is a profoundly imperial view.
Norma, your time is up. Thank you. Mike?
Oh, thank you so much. This is a really important area to me in terms of curricular changes that I think would be super beneficial in Berkeley Unified. Someone noted Hasmeen Manassian, yes, someone that has created, done amazing work in the universal nine-year, but also in ethnic studies during the pandemic. I have a PhD in ethnic studies and I teach in Cal's ethnic studies program. During the pandemic and previous to that, we saw a lot of disjunctures in our society, including incidents such as Charlottesville, very upsetting images and instances of racial violence and other forms of violence across the country that our children need better tools to understand. Because we are in a modern era with a lot of complexity. I've worked during the pandemic in the Ethnic Studies Coalition, working to get a teacher on special assignment up and running for ethnic studies. And also I'm now working on a Cal-BUSD exploration to engage on teaching and certifying ethnic studies folks per the state mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We got Jennifer back, which is great. No worries. You're last on this next question, so you had some time. So for the next question, we're going to start with Kadisha. This is question number seven. Addressing mental health challenges is a complex, ill-defined and real problem facing our students. Tell us about a time you had to solve an ill-defined, complex problem. Kadisha?
Have you ever been a math teacher? Because that's what I'm doing every day. But to be completely honest with you, like our mental health crisis, which was exacerbated by the pandemic, has been really challenging and complex, especially because of the level of sensitivity with our students, our families, as well as past history. And so this has been a complex problem, one of the most complex that I've dealt with outside of the pandemic itself. And so I'm proud of the work that we've done with the board as well as the city. We've partnered together. We received a mental health grant, which will provide a mental health coordinator for our entire school district to coordinate services so that we can be proactive, like I was saying earlier, as well as responsive to the needs of our students. And so thank you for the question.
Thank you. Rachey?
I'm sorry, Adina, I, the question just kind of flew out of my head.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, so addressing mental health challenges is a complex, ill-defined and real problem facing our students. Tell us about a time you had to solve an ill-defined, complex problem.
Great. I love these hypotheticals, example questions. I'll, I'll give another example of a complex issue that was, that was ill-defined. Is when, when I was at Golden Gate University, I was the associate dean of online education. This is before COVID, where a lot of institutions had not moved online and didn't know how to. I was tasked with bringing an online, hybrid online JD degree and developing career tracks for our non-traditional students at Golden Gate, who are often, you know, second career, third career students. And so I think one of the first things that you do is you go into a situation like that and put your own judgment aside, because you have to be a student yourself to learn about, to learn about what's in front of you. Okay? And then you have to develop relationships with the stakeholders around the table to see if you can find common ground. And then you have to come up with a plan for implementation, as well as seek the funding to ensure that it's well implemented.
Thank you. Tatiana?
So a great example of navigating a complex and sort of difficult issue is the special education process in the Berkeley Unified School District. I still haven't heard back from anybody at Berkeley High about my godson's IEP and my son's IEP. It's been a week, and I find that pretty unacceptable, especially because both of them are struggling. And they both have annual meetings coming up. So, so, but navigating the special education process in Berkeley is like the seventh circle of hell. And it is not transparent, it's not understandable, it's very confusing, it's very dehumanizing. In fact, school psychologists are calling my clients and telling them to not pursue assessments for their children because it's stigmatizing. But it's true, that's a true story. So that, navigating all of that and accessing services for as many kids as I've been able to access for has been an issue I've dealt with successfully.
Thank you. Next is Norma. Norma, I'm going to repeat the question one more time. Addressing mental health challenges is a complex, ill-defined and real problem facing our students. Tell us about a time you had to solve an ill-defined, complex problem.
I'm trying to establish our thinking in the direction of removing age segregation, which I think directly affects working on that. In my lifetime, the United States has overthrown or attempted to overthrow more than 50 governments, mostly democracies. It hit the democracies that have been struggling for a communist construct. It has interfered in democratic elections in 30 countries. It has dropped bombs on the people of 30 countries, most of them poor and defenseless. It has attempted to murder the leaders of 50 countries. It has fought to suppress liberation movements in 20 countries. The extent and scale of this carnage is largely unreported, unrecognized, and those responsible continue to dominate Anglo-American political life.
Norma. Mike?
Thank you so much. I deal with a lot of complex questions in my day job at the US Department of Education. Mental health is an area that is a complex area, but that can be remedied with evidence-driven analysis and policies and procedures. I'll give one example. In mitigating a very high school discipline race disparity in a nearby school district, that was many times a national average. We put in place systemic policies and procedures and remedies to ensure that those numbers came down. And one of those practices that we put in place with the school district was to have wellness centers established across the school district. You might not think that a wellness center would have something to do with mitigation of race disparities. But if you think about it, it covers a wide range of issues. It provides teachers a space to allow students to go and de-escalate and meet with a socio-emotionally, a social psychologically trained counselor. And also as a source of turning that student over to additional services such as disabilities. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you so much. I serve, currently serve as president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, and I'm on the contract negotiations team. And our district recently brought to us a pretty significant change in our healthcare benefits. And it is really complicated, and it's really ill-defined. And it will impact the faculty, the 1,000 members that we have right now. It'll impact all of the retirees, it will impact the staff, and it will impact our students and community because it has some pretty significant cost savings associated with it. So trying to weigh all of those different issues and trying to be sure that I'm serving the students that I took this job in order to serve, the community that I'm part of, and the members that I represent, as well as negotiating with the administration, is complicated and is a good example associated with that. Thanks.
Thank you. So the next question will be our last question, just so we can end on time and still be able to do closing statements. This last question here is, what has been your day job or jobs in the last three years? And based on that, what skills will you bring to this position that will specifically benefit our students? And to begin this question, we will have Rachey.
I think I said last three years, and I feel like what, what haven't I done in the last three years? I've been a law professor. I'm one of the few in the country, few women in the country, teaching one of the hardest classes in law school called civil procedure. I was a director of academic achievement. So what that means is working one-on-one, anywhere from working- So what that means is working one-on-one, anywhere from working one-on-one with students who are struggling in order to move the needle, as well as designing large programs, comprehensive programs to help a large group of students, again, to move the academic needle. That's my area of expertise. I'm a national expert on academic achievement and student success. I'm also, as I mentioned earlier, was a dean of online education. I've been involved in my children's school as chair of the school site council. I'm currently a member, although I want to do a lot more than I've been able to on the anti-racism committee.
Thank you. Tatiana?
Can you just repeat the question?
Sure. Yes. The question is, what has been your day job or jobs in the last three years? And based on that, what skills will you bring to this position that will specifically benefit our students?
So my day job since, for twelve years, has been co-director of Classroom Matters, doing educational consulting, one-on-one tutoring with kids with severe learning differences, and an advocate. I've advocated for hundreds of families around the Bay Area. I'm also the president of the board of an organization called Access Ed, which awards financial aid to families who are trying to access educational services. I am also on the PTSA at Berkeley High School. I'm the VP of Diversity and Inclusion, so I work to try and close the equity gap for families and students. And I'm a mom of three and a partner to the most amazing best friend, partner at Classroom Matters, Lisa Miller.
Thank you. Next is Norma.
I have spent a lifetime working to enable people to recognize our social oppression by church, state, community, and the release to be found through communist struggle. I don't know if I've mentioned so far, I'm a third-generation communist and subscribe deeply to that idea. It reforges me great joy to at least work in that kind of area. I say that, where did it go? I'll read you a little bit of the Pilgrim. Do we live in a media society where the brainwashing is insidious and relentless, and perception is filtered according to the needs and lies of state and corporate power? The United States dominates the Western world's media.
Your time is up. I'm gonna repeat the question one more time. What has been your day job or jobs in the last three years? And based on that, what skills will you bring to this position that will specifically benefit our students? And Mike, you're next.
Thank you so much. I've been a attorney with the US Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights for the past fifteen years, where I enforce federal laws to prohibit discrimination across race, sex, disability, and age. That means I go into school districts across the state of California and in some other states, ensuring that the school districts come into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Acts, Act, and the Title IX Act prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sex. Title VI, the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act prohibiting discrimination on the basis of race. Ensuring essentially that students have equitable access to programs and services in their schools, working with school boards, working with parents in those school districts, the union, to ensure that remedies are implemented in a way that ensures fidelity so that all students have equitable access to the programs and services. And that's why I will bring to the school district if they liked it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, thanks so much. So I'm a chemistry professor at Merritt College. I have been teaching classes. I teach bioethics at Cal and also math skills and study skills to students that are entering into our chemistry programs each semester. I've been the principal investigator for Bridges Tobacco Laureate Grant, aimed at diversifying our sciences and helping support community college students to transfer to four-year institutions. And I've also done a variety of volunteer work here in the city of Berkeley for our schools and for the city at large and the broader Bay Area. As a teacher, I, I see the skills that our students really need when they leave the K through twelve, their K through twelve experience, and I know what those gaps are. As a union president, president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, I know the questions that need to be asked, and I know how to build community coalitions. I forgot to mention that. Thank you.
Kadeja?
Okay, can you hear me okay? Great. Thank you for the question. So many of you know I've been a teacher for the last eight years, I've taught every single subject, but in the past few years focused on math, science, and now coding. I have dedicated my career to serving students and families in underserved communities and focused on culturally responsive pedagogy that helped to ignite student engagement, not just in my classroom, but around every, every school that I have been a part of and provided teachers, faculty, and staff with a roadmap to be successful as well. Additionally, up until just two months ago, I was also the Black and African-American Student Achievement Initiative Coordinator. And under my leadership, my school helped our Black and African-American students increase their number of students meeting or exceeding the standard on ASVAC. We increased, increased the cumulative GPA of our Black and African-American students, decreased the number of suspensions, and increased feelings of inclusion amongst our students, faculty, and staff. And the best on-the-job training that I have had is being the president of the board, and there's no better training than that.
Thank you, Kadeja. Before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the League of Women Voters. Thank you, first of all, to the candidates for running for office and for your participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, pros and cons, and positions on ballot measures, please visit our league's website, or votersedge.org/CA. We invite you to join the league to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. We work on issues like climate change, criminal justice reform, healthcare, and much more. Visit our website and social media accounts at LWVBAE. The deadline to register to vote is October twenty-fourth this year. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Vote-by-mail ballots will be sent to all registered voters from October tenth. Remember to, to return your vote-by-mail ballots by Tuesday, November eighth, or vote in person at any of the vote centers in Alameda County. We are encouraging voters to vote as early as possible. For more information about voting in this election, please visit our website, You can also visit the Alameda County Register of Voters website, acvote.gov. I'd also like to give a very special thank you to the Berkeley Unified School District PTA Council for cosponsoring this forum and providing the questions for this evening. And also thank you to the volunteers who are working on this forum as well. Now the candidates will be making their closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with, so each candidate will have a closing statement of one minute, and we will start with Mike Chang.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you so much for the time you've taken today, listening, and for us to have this opportunity in this space. I am a fifteen-year attorney with the US Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights. I'm going to bring that experience, putting in place constructive and pragmatic solutions to complex questions, many of which our school district faces. If you were to provide me with your vote, which I would very much appreciate, and I'm asking you for, of course, in coming to this forum. I'm a longtime parent in the school district too, have been here for twelve years, have three more years to go. I've been in various PTAs, most recently on the PTA Board, PTA Executive Board, most recently. I'm also a teacher. I teach at UC Berkeley. So I have an understanding of the needs of teaching, and I seek to work closely with teachers and listen to them, as well as parents, as I did on the PTA. So thank you very much, and I would very much appreciate your vote. Reach out to me and ask me with any questions you have on my website.
Thank you. Norma?
I've told people that we hate school. They go, oh no, I loved school. And I say, you know, after the third grade, children get to be aware that it's pretty controlling and not comfortable, and that the people who love school have a case of selective amnesia. They forget the discomfort because it's not acceptable in society. We're supposed to venerate school, and we do. We let it get away with a whole lot. And we've been talking about that here in these people's details. They have intimate knowledge about schooling, and none of it is talking about the problems that go on that make people miserable. School is a cruel thing we do to the parents, the communities, and of course, the children and adult students, being forced to sit in classrooms in order to be considered deserving.
Thank you. Your time is up. Tatiana?
Thank you so much for hosting us and for listening. These are great questions. My platform is simple because my values are simple. Berkeley families and students are not one-size-fits-all, and their education shouldn't be either. My goal is to center the needs of students and to make decisions and policy changes that support their best interests. We have a crisis of confidence in the Berkeley Unified School District, and it sometimes feels like we're shouting into a void. We need more transparency, more communication, and less business as usual. We need to elect leaders who aren't afraid to have uncomfortable and challenging conversations. And if anyone knows me, they know that I'm transparent and that they know that I say what I think. I believe in being clear, because I believe in that being clear is kind. And my goal is to bring our community together, students, families, teachers, all of us together to help make Berkeley what it should be.
Thank you, Tatiana. Rachey?
We are in an age of declining enrollment. The reality is families are losing confidence in our district. This is not, we cannot afford business as usual. Time is ticking, our children are waiting for us, and we need strong leadership today. Every child can do more than we think, and when we set the standards high for them, guess what? We set the standards high for ourselves. I have a track record for moving the needle for not only the highest need students, but also creating outstanding opportunities for all of them. If you elect me, you don't have to choose. You don't have to choose between supporting students who need it or advanced classes. We can and we must do both. You do not have to pick between being student-centered or pro-teacher, because we can be both. I am supported by Vice President Babett, President Kadeja Brown, as well as Berkeley High Stop Harassing, and a whole group of other elected leaders. But one thing I want to leave with you is, who would the children endorse? Thank you.
Thank you. Kadeja?
I thank you all so much for this opportunity, of course, to you, the League of Women Voters, as well as the PTA. I am so happy that you all joined together to assure, to ensure that our students in BUSD are well through your advocacy and through your voice. So thank you so much for that. I am running for reelection to also ensure that our students in Berkeley Unified School District are well. Four years ago, I set out on a plan to close the achievement gap to ensure accountability and equity. And I know that the work here in BUSD is not done. So I am excited to continue the work that I set off on and to make good on the promises that I made to our community. I am proud to be endorsed by the Berkeley Federation of Teachers, Berkeley Council of Classified Employees, Alameda Labor Council, Alameda Democratic Club, Alameda Buildings and Construction Trades Council, Wellstone Democratic Club, Latinos and Needles Day Berkeley, Local Twenty-One, John George Democratic Club, Nancy Skinner, Jesse Aragine, every single sitting school board member, and every single sitting council member, as well as a host of educators, families, and friends. Please endorse me as well, or support me rather, as well. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. I want to thank you once again for holding this forum, and thanks to everyone who's here, listening to the forum. And if you look at the recording, thank you for looking at the recording as well. I'm really proud to have my kids in Berkeley Unified School District. I'm proud of the education that they're receiving, and I'm running because I really want to bring my energy and my skills and my perspectives to support our district in ways that ensure that we support our families, our community, and our kids first and foremost. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Berkeley Federation of Teachers, the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees, the Alameda Labor Council, Mayor Aragon, a supermajority of city council, a supermajority of the school board, Senator Nancy Skinner, the Wellstone Democratic Club, John George Democratic Club, the Alameda Democratic Party, and a variety of teachers, parents, and community members, and I hope to gain your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, please join me in a round of applause for the candidates. I know they can't hear you, but hopefully they're, they're experiencing it. Thank you all so much for attending and good night.